Commissioner Brady, we are now live.
Welcome to the December 28, 2020, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Howler, God truly, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for your blessings this day. But we thank you for being with us throughout this year. It has been a trying year, but we know, Lord, that you are in control. We ask your blessing and your guidance and your wisdom on this meeting tonight, Lord, as we continue to try to make the best decisions for the community that we can. We do all these things, Father, honoring you and honoring the public and the citizens of this community. And we ask these blessings upon us in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray, you're on mute.
Here, sorry about that.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Commissioners, before the minutes of our meeting of December 14, 2020, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 14 meeting in the suspense with the formal reading.
Second.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. No objection. The motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Once again, we're holding the Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk. We will answer those that pertain to the legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. We would also like to point out the fact that those participating in this meeting are doing so with the appropriate distancing and face masks. Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's meeting?
Yes, Mr. President. We do have an audience participation. It comes from Ms. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky. In regards to Consent Item D, she asks, does Commissioner Murray have to abstain on the STS school contract with his wife seated on the school board? And number two, why is the school using a busing contract with the city when the school has its own buses?
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. We will answer those questions as we get to them. The one concerning Mr. Murray, I think we could answer, we could turn to our law director for his input now so that that item can perhaps stay on the consent agenda. Our law director, Mr. Howell, are you available to comment on that question?
Yes, Commission President, I am. Through you to Ms. Johnson. Commissioner Murray may vote on this piece of the consent agenda. As his wife sits on the school board of the Sandusky City Schools, there's no direct or personal benefit to her or to him, so there's no conflict of interest in him voting on this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. The additional question we will address as we get to that legislation. This evening, we have three public hearings. The first public hearing is to amend the zoning map regarding 2101 Perkins Ave. This is a public hearing, and I'll ask for any questions submitted by the public to be answered while the presentation is taking place. I believe that each presenter has any questions that have been asked in the public hearing, and I'll ask you to incorporate those questions and answers in your presentation. Mr. Volps, I believe you are the first presenter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a brief presentation to give some context to this public hearing. This public hearing is for an amendment to, a proposed amendment to the zoning map at 2101 Perkins Ave. The site location, as you all may be familiar with, is the former YMCA. It is along Perkins Ave. It is currently zoned public facilities, and it is surrounded by other public facilities zoning. And it is north of Perkins Township, which is zoned heavy industrial. The applicant has applied for an amendment to the zoning map for the YMCA property, parcel number 58-68049.000. As mentioned, the property is currently zoned public facilities, and the applicant would like to rezone the site to limited manufacturing. The property is surrounded by other public facility parcels and uses. The applicant is proposing to use the site for a light manufacturing facility, looking to relocate into the city of Sandusky. The current vacant building is not likely able to fully The building has fallen into a precarious state of disrepair since the closure of the YMCA. Staff believes that this proposal is in line with the city's bicentennial vision comprehensive plan, as a rezoning could offer great potential for a growing small business in the surrounding community. This also helps redevelop a blighted parcel along Perkins Ave. The applicant has other future ideas for the property to make the most of the space, and the potential exists for it to be used at by other small manufacturers as an incubator-type space. In conclusion, staff recommends the approval of the proposed amendment to the zone map for 2101 Perkins Ave, parcel number 58-068009.00, from public facilities to limited manufacturing. And it was also recommended by the planning commission to city commission. With that, we have one public comment, and this is from the applicant. It is Mark Miller from Honor Commercial. He states, "To the representatives of the city of Sandusky, we would like to introduce ourselves as Honor Commercial DBA AC Commercial Door and Window. We are a provider of door and window solutions and materials for the commercial building industry. We are before you in the hopes of purchasing the property located at 2101 West Perkins Ave in Sandusky, formerly the YMCA. We have a formal purchase agreement with the current owners, with one of the remaining contingencies being a rezoning of the property from public facilities used to light manufacturing. The company currently has eight employees and is looking to grow that number by over 50% in the next 18 months. We feel that we will be able to repurpose the building to suit our growth needs while providing several jobs for residents, tax revenue for the city, and initially using a portion of the building as a business incubating space for local entrepreneurs as well. We believe that this can be a great opportunity for both the city, for our company, and for the residents of the city of Sandusky. Not only will we be providing tax revenue to the city and bringing jobs for the city's residents, we would also be restoring and utilizing a blighted and repeatedly vandalized building. We are hopeful that a city commission will see the progressive vision we have for this once-prominent fixture of the city, and a favorable outcome for everyone can be met. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays."
Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Volps, that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harris?
Just ahead of us, you know, taking our vote, I would just like to say that I'm really delighted just to see this move, you know, here to the city of Sandusky, or this pending move, I should say, here to the city of Sandusky. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Miller for quite some time. As I grew up down the street as a youngster on Perry Street, he lived on the corner of Perry and Adams, and his son and I went to school together. But anyhow, as I digress, you know, I've witnessed this company grow over the last few years. And in speaking with Dan Honor just the other day, you know, they're really excited about this potential move, and I think we should all certainly welcome them with open arms and do anything we can to make this move possible. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Any other comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
So I'm also pleased to see this repurposing of this particular piece of property. I know there are a lot of folks that want to see the Y come back, but this building is, to a certain extent, a white elephant. It could very well be that the city could find itself, if it's not resold and it's not fixed up very soon, we could find ourselves with a liability that significantly exceeds the cost or the value of the property. So I think for a lot of reasons, we have a lot, we have an interest, love to see the jobs here, love to see the tax revenues here, but also, this is an expense avoided for us down the road. Maybe not this commission, maybe not the next one, but within the next 10, 15 years, we'd be looking at this liability. So they're doing us a favor in that regard as well. Thanks.
Additional comments, commissioners? I agree with, I agree with both Commissioner Harrison and Commissioner Murray. I'm thrilled that someone's willing to take a chance on this property and turn what was an iconic piece of property, the YMCA, we all know as the YMCA property for the last, what, 30 or 40 years, has certainly fallen into disrepair. This is hopefully the next step in this progression, and I am optimistic that the Honor people will breathe new life into this facility sooner rather than later. So I think this is an excellent presentation and an excellent opportunity for both them and for us. There are no additional comments or questions. I will declare this public hearing closed. The second public hearing regards to community development, block grant funding overview for the fiscal year 2019. I believe that Ms. Deb Eversole is going to conduct that hearing, this hearing. Ms. Eversole, are you with us?
I am here. I'm looking for my presentation. I apologize.
Ms. Eversole, how about if we move you to the next presentation? We've got a third, we've got a third presentation on our budget. How about if we move you to the third place and allow our third presentation? Public hearing is on the calendar year 2021 budget and would be conducted by our finance director, Michelle Reader.
Thank you, Commissioner President. I just want to note something for the 2021 budget. First of all, if we're talking about the 2021 budget, we've made it through 2020. We all know it's been a rough year, so we're grateful that it's almost over. Just want to give you some highlights of the budget and the timeline. So the charter requires that we have to have the first draft of the budget passed, or I'm sorry, not passed, but drafted by November 1st. So we had the first draft of the budget out by then, and now we are onto the final draft of the budget, and we cannot pass that until the second meeting of, I'm sorry, the second Monday in January, which is the first commission meeting of the year. So tonight, we just have the first reading of the budget, and we can possibly pass this at the first meeting in January. This 2021 budget has been recommended and for approval by our finance committee, who spent many hours with us going over this and monitoring our budget this year and also for next year. Some highlights of the budget for the general fund. Our revenue for 2021 is estimated to be $17.8 million. When we compare that to our revenue that we have budgeted for 2020, it was $21.6 million. So we're budgeting a conservative budget for 2021, where we have our revenue for the general fund down $4 million, or 18%. When we're looking at our year-to-date revenue, right now, we hit $18.2 million of general fund revenue, so we're budgeting a little bit less than what we've received this year. And that was intentional, just to make sure it's conservative. We did get some stimulus dollars and some other things this year that are not guaranteed for next year. The income tax revenue, we have budgeted at $9.4 million. When we compare that to the $11.4 million that we budgeted in 2020, we're down $2 million. A lot of that's going to be dependent on withholding, employees getting back to work, making sure everyone's at work, and our businesses and their net profit returns for 2020 that we will receive in 2021. Our admissions tax, we have budgeted $1.7 million in 2021, and that's still a far cry from the $4.7 million that we had budgeted in 2020. The lodging tax revenue, we're estimated to be at $950,000. Again, comparing that to 2020, we were budgeting $1.5 million. So the revenue, we're trying to be conservative. If revenue comes in better, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but we wanted to make sure we were conservative, and we can make it to the end of 2021. On the expenses, the budgeted expenses for 2021 in the general fund are $19.9 million. That's down from the $21.6 million that we had budgeted in 2020. This year, we did have that CARES Act funding, which helped reduce our expenditures by $1.6 million, which we were very grateful for. This budget does contain the contractual wage increases for our ASME employees, which is 2.5%. Our police and fire union personnel will receive a 3% raise according to their union contract. The administrative staff will have their wages reinstated to the pre-COVID levels. So administrative staff had a 5% or 10% pay reduction early on in April. So in 2021, the administrative staff will have their pay reinstated, but they also have the option of taking furlough if they so desire. Our full-time employee count currently is at 223 employees. We started the year in 2020 with 253 employees, so we are still down 30 full-time employees at this point. This budget also includes general fund transfers. We have budgeted $180,000 for the housing program, $750,000 for infrastructure, $125,000 for development, $60,000 for programming, and $10,000 for public art. With the 2021 revenue budgeted to be $17.8 million and our expenditures to be $19.9 million, that gives us a deficit spending projected of $2.1 million at this point. So with our year-end 2020 general fund cash balance looking to be about $4.6 or $4.7 million, this deficit spending that's projected, again, things could come in better than what we're proposing in this budget. Our general fund cash balance at the end of 2021 would be $2.5 million. So we all know 2020 has been a rough year, and we're looking for 2021 to be slightly better, but we're still going to be conservative, especially on the revenue figures. But we will continuously monitor the budget and make any adjustments as necessary.
Questions or comments for the finance director, Commissioner? Ms. Reader, I'm certain that you don't have any additional funds baked into this budget for CARES Act funding, because it doesn't look like, at least in the short term, that any more dollars like that are coming our way. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We are certainly thankful for the, thankful for the dollars we've received, but I think it is, I think you're on the right track. It certainly would be foolhardy to count on additional handouts from the federal government. They are, they are rather unpredictable, certainly at this point in time.
Absolutely.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
Thank you. I just want to tip my hat to staff, and particularly Eric and Michelle and all the department heads, who have worked so hard to contain the budget this year, and the staff who has worked mercilessly, you know, very difficult conditions. Think about the conditions our police firefighters are facing out there at risk of COVID. Reduced numbers in the force, and yet they're still getting it done. There hasn't been an interruption in service. So I'm, I just want to express my gratitude for a lot of careful planning, a lot of difficult cuts, but we've made it through. And things, you know, at the bottom in the March and April timeframe, it did look as though our budget could be cut by as much as 45%, or revenues by 45%. That we made it through with revenues down, when I last calculated it, Ms. Reader, it was about 29%. Still an enormous blow to our budget, and yet we see with the transfers that are planned for the 2021 budget that we're not missing a beat in terms of maintaining the progress we've had. That is what is ultimately going to lead to is continued success and its continued revival. The fact that we haven't decided to burn the furniture in order to be able to keep things warm right now, the fact we've continued to plan for the future, is what's going to get us through all of this and allow us to prosper again, just like we were before the pandemic. So I just want to say thank you to all levels of staff, who have done heroic service, particularly the firefighters and the police officers, but all of you have done amazing service in the course of this last year, an awful year, and one for which we have, I guess, three more days, and I'll be grateful to see that page turned. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah. To the finance director, the, we've got 223 employees now. You indicated there'd be a significant deficit next year. What's baked into that deficit employee-wise? What are we budgeting in terms of number of employees by the end of next year and which departments? If any at all?
Sure. Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole. So we do want to get our safety service personnel back to where they need to be, because we do have some retirements that just happened. So they're working on filling those positions as quickly as they can to get the safety services back in. The only other positions that are in here, and that is at midway through the year, we have the planning director position possibly budgeted, we have it budgeted, so we can look at that to see if we can fill that, beginning in July of this year, and also an assistant planner looking to fill that possibly in September of this year. We do have Jonathan Holliday coming on board January 4th. So when he gets on board and we get that sorted out and we see how the revenue is coming in, we can make adjustments to that, but that is shown in the budget currently.
Okay, you said a lot and talked pretty fast. I'm at like 44 police officers and I think whatever it is, at Fire Department. What are we doing with police and fire to bring them up to staffing?
I think I'll let John or Zach jump in, because he's been involved in the selection committee process and where they stand with those hires.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole. We have 46 fire, or police officers that are budgeted into the 2021 budget. In 2020, we started with 48, so we're going to fill 46 positions. I think we just had a retirement last week, and we're down either 43 or 44. But those, we have made through the Chief Oliver a conditional offer to one officer. He's starting on January 4th. Another one is going to be starting shortly thereafter. So that takes care of the Police Department, and then Chief Green and Captain Lesch and Captain DiAmico. And I have been interviewing candidates for fire. They're currently down two positions, and they have a retirement coming right after the 1st of the year. We did start a firefighter two weeks ago, and once we get through the interview process, we plan on filling those positions for the Fire Department after the 1st of the year. We have some more interviews. They had to do some physical agility testing to get their list up to the 10 minimum. So those positions are all going to be filled as quickly as possible.
Okay, I think I'm talking about a number at the end. At what point am I going to be back up to 50 for the Fire Department? Which is where, I'm trying to figure out when we're going to be back up to full staff. Likewise with Fire, 46 is still too short. And if we're going to be in deficit spending, where's the money being spent? Which may not be your answer, but when we're talking about the Police Department, with the crime and problems we're having in the community, my questions are directed toward, what are we spending the money on if not that? And that's thrown out to whoever, I imagine the manager, if you, if you want to talk about why you don't need any more police officers. 46 is too short of 48. Where we've been before?
I think the manager, Volps, is trying to answer, but I believe he's muted.
So, so, to Commissioner Poole, I apologize, I had my phone muted and I didn't realize that. So, yes, we have budgeted to hire all vacant fire positions this year as they become available, other than extending the period for the chief. We do have down two total police officers this year, but that won't impact at all our ability to do patrol work. We had beefed up, as you know, three new positions in the Community Impact Department after the passage of issue eight, and through creative staffing this year, we'll be able to meet the needs with 46. Our goal is to get that number right back to 48 as quickly as possible, as soon as we know where money is coming in, either later this year or earlier next year. Just to put that in perspective, we're talking about two total safety positions that are down in the 2021 budget from a total staffing historically in my time here of about 96, so about a 2% to 3% reduction in police and fire staffing. And the reality is that nearly every other division of the city has taken at least a 10% hit, if not a much more significant hit. So we have very much prioritized police and fire staffing over all else. The reality is we're just staying in other lines. And I know Michelle alluded to a planner position. I just want to be clear there, too. We went from 10 positions of planning and development to seven through our attrition and the restructuring that we had to do, and then through three other vacancies, we went down to four, which was never anticipated. So this is just slowly filling those positions over the course of 12 months, but will still be a 30% reduction overall in the staffing of that department. So we're talking about a 2% to 3% reduction in staffing of safety, where most departments have taken significantly more than that, and we're bringing those positions back first and intend to get back to full staffing by the end of this coming year or the beginning of 2021. So I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Chairman, the answer is what you gave. Let me suggest this, that the percentage of cuts in any one of these departments is not relevant, because we're starting with numbers that aren't necessarily appropriate. The fact that you had 10 people in whichever department you said it was has dropped down to six. We never discussed throughout the time of the last five years of hiring people, whether or not, what those people were doing, what, how important it was to the community. Again, I'm getting back to, I've got 46 patrolmen, of which two or whatever are doing community impact, which is essentially visiting businesses and talking. I'm concerned about the ability to walk down the streets safely, and do we have sufficient police officers to do that? The number of people I have doing in the planning department, when I match it against how much activity is going on in planning, I'm not sure I needed 10 people, and I may very well have spoken wrong about which department you're talking about, but those percentages are meaningless until we've established that the numbers that we started with were appropriate and had the right priority for a community. I'm interested in people moving to the community. I'm interested in the fact that we've lost population, and the things that people look at when they're deciding to move somewhere deals with safety and schools. And so that's where I'm coming from, and as we move forward with this budget, hopefully you're going to be able to, we're not going to get it discussed in detail here, but between now and the time we vote on this budget, an identification of what you're going to spend this money on for the next year, so it can make a reasonable decision about whether or not the priorities are in the right place for the community to move forward. And that's my, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, I just want to clarify that everything we do is about community safety, but certainly when you look at the overall health of a community, statistically speaking, police are one part of what makes a community safe, and they're often the backend of what makes a community safe. And so what we do with investments in economic development and infrastructure and housing, all of which have been built up over the course of each budget that has been passed by this commission over the last six years, has been equally important to community safety. by this commission over the last six years, has been equally important to community safety as to the police department over the period of time. So when you look at things like population, you know, you can't just invest in public safety. So again, while those departments have taken the smallest reductions of any department, certainly, and it will continue to be the case, if we get out of these other areas entirely, you're going to end up with a declining revenue and declining investment in the community and a less safe community over time. When most people imagine the safest community they can think of, it is not because they have a police officer at every corner, it's because a variety of things work in that community, including response. So again, the commission's been a big part of passing all these budgets, just didn't come up out of nowhere. And again, nobody's talking about going back to 10 in the planning and development department. They're talking about going from 10 to 4, and whether that 60% hit is an overall approach. So I look forward to that dialogue over the next few weeks, but feel pretty firmly that we've done a good job of balancing the needs of the community and the commission's will in the preparation of this budget.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole, I'm not interested in debating this issue through the entire evening. Mr. Minzer, you have a question? You have the floor, Mr. Minzer.
Just a response to the last comments.
Commissioner Poole, you do not have the floor. Commissioner Minzer has.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, thank you. I, you know, I'm torn with this as well. I know the minimum manning for the fire department at one time was 60. The run volume has probably close to doubled since that day, and the reason, the older I got and the wiser I got, the reason that this has happened is because this city has started rotting. So we have to turn it around somewhere. I don't feel comfortable putting two men on an engine, putting two people on an ambulance where they can't handle a cardiac arrest. I feel that isn't safe for the citizens. However, if we don't make some calculated risks in trying to improve our community and get rid of some of this rot, the run volume is just going to keep increasing and we won't be able to hire enough police and firefighters. I just don't see how keep throwing police and firefighters is at it. I want to have enough police and firemen that they're safe, and I want the community to be safe, but there's a balance there somewhere. We just can't let this town deteriorate and continue in that direction. We have to improve it. We have to draw that 10,000 people that we've lost in population. I think actually we probably lost 15,000 people and 5,000 people that moved in because they found some dilapidated house they can move into. And they create havoc on health and human services, on the police department, on the fire department, on every service that a community can provide. And it's got to be a delicate balance somewhere. And I mean, you know, Chief Green and Chief Oliver, I know they're trying to do the best they can, as long as they don't get anybody hurt, and as long as we're covering everything and we're not hurting it, and we're not letting people die in the streets and not backing up on calls and using mutual aid, my answer is automatic aid and mutual aid. I think that's my answer to get out of it. So I've tried that for years, but maybe we can go back to it. But I probably talked too long, too. I'm sorry. Let's continue on, but there's my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Minzer. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, there appear to be none, so I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Response to the manager's comments, I want to point out that I didn't say that we're going to abandon the rest of the things that we do to the community. I do not, I don't agree with you that everything we spend money on affects safety. So I just want to make, point that out. I'm simply saying we need to look at what all the things the money is going to be spent on, and then decide whether or not we agree that this is best for the community. Thank you.
No further comments or questions. I declare this public hearing closed.
Commission President, this is Michelle. I do have public comments from Ms. Sharon Johnson to read.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Michelle.
So Sharon Johnson from 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky has five questions. The first one being, what will the deficit be going into 2021? So the projected deficit, as I stated before, is $2.1 million at this time. Her second question is, what is the overall debt going into 2021, including water and sewer? That's a very convoluted question. The debt spreadsheet, I will send that to her. I can send it to all the commissioners also. It is also included in the 2021 budget that's also available on our website, but I'll get her that information. Question three, are there going to be any raises budgeted for 2021 and how much? So the raises again are for the AFSCME union at 2.5% and police and fire union at 3%. Question four, will the 2020 raises be reinstated? We don't have any raises to be reinstated, so I think the question is about the administrative staff who had a wage reduction. So they will be reinstated, but it's not exactly a raise per se. And question five, a charter amendment passed giving the commissioners a raise. What will the yearly dollar amount be for each commissioner? So the charter amendment moves the pay for the commissioners to $684.85 per month, which is $8,218 annually. The commission president does get a little bit of a bonus, so his salary will be $9,258. And that is the end of her question.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Reader. Now I can declare this hearing closed. Ms. Eversole, I believe you are now in third place compared to second place on CDGB, the CDGB public hearing. If you're ready to go, we're ready to go.
Thank you, Commission President Brady. I'm very sorry for the delay, but I think I'm up and running and I'm ready to go. So, good evening, commissioners, staff, and viewing audience. I come before you tonight to report that the city of Sandusky intends to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the fiscal year 2019 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report under the Community Development Block Grant Program. The consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or CAPER, details the city of Sandusky's accomplishments during the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, year 2019. It also shows achievements towards meeting the goals outlined in the city of Sandusky's 2019 through 2023 five-year consolidated plan. For the program year 2019, the city of Sandusky was allocated $721,669 to spend on eligible activities during the program, beginning July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. The annual funding is calculated through a formula allocation by HUD, from HUD. Sandusky administered several activities that include public facility improvements, clearance and demolition, and public service activities, to name a few. The purpose of this public hearing is to announce that the city of Sandusky intends to submit this report in its final version to HUD by the required deadline of December 30th, 2020. The city was given a 90-day extension to the normal deadline, which is 90 days following completion of the program, which would have been September 30th of this year. The program rules state that in order to be eligible for funding, every CDBG-funded activity must qualify as meeting one of the three national objectives of the program. This requires that each activity, except for certain activities carried out under the eligibility categories of planning and capacity building, program administration, and technical assistance must meet tests for either benefiting low and moderate income persons, preventing or eliminating slum and blight, or urgent need. The goals and outcomes table shown is generated with HUD's Integrated Disbursement and Information Systems, or IDIS. Because this report is auto-populated, some of the goals for the five-year consolidated plan are listed, but were not funded during this first year of the five-year program. Therefore, some of the outcomes have generated zeros and zero percentages complete. Additionally, some of the outcomes populated were accomplished well over the targeted goals. Therefore, some of the outcomes have generated an over 100% percentage complete. The largest portion of funding was categorized as neighborhood stabilization. The purpose of this category is to enhance the quality of life for people living in low and moderate income neighborhoods through public investment in facilities, improvements, and services, as well as elimination of blight. During the 2019 program year, the city of Sandusky allocated $392,348.27 in funding for public facilities. A reconstruction project on Shoreline Drive benefited an estimated 8,155 people residing in the city of Sandusky. This funding was fully dispersed during the program year. Another accomplishment during the 2019 program year, the city of Sandusky was awarded $191,196 in funding to be used for blight elimination. The city of Sandusky used $108,108.20 of these funds to demolish nine dilapidated structures that were beyond repair. These were all residential structures. The remaining funds were dispersed after the program year ended in June for ongoing demolitions that were in progress at the end of the program year. The other category, directly benefiting city residents, is special needs assistance. And the purpose of this category is to promote access to public services for special needs populations generally assumed to be low to moderate income, including but not limited to programs addressing youth and children, seniors and elderly and frail elderly, veterans and persons with mental, physical, or developmental disabilities, alcohol and drug addiction, HIV and AIDS, or other special needs. Accomplishments during the program year, $30,000 was allocated to the Erie County Senior Center Meals on Wheels program, which was used to purchase food that was then delivered to senior citizens residing in Sandusky. The program was able to benefit 264 elderly persons residing within the city of Sandusky. The funding for this activity was fully dispersed during the program year. Another accomplishment was the city of Sandusky was awarded $15,000 in funding to the OGO Reach program, which allowed continuation of their mobile food pantry, which helps fight food insecurity within the city of Sandusky. The program was able to benefit 4,895 persons residing within the city, which is over tripled the amount of the anticipated number of persons to be benefited throughout the program. The funding for this activity was fully dispersed throughout the program year, and the COVID-19 outbreak is suspected to be the reason for the high numbers reported. There was an additional $5,000 rewarded to the Erie County General Health District 211 program, which was canceled prior to the contract being signed. The funding was not used during the program year and will be eligible for carryover for use in the 2020 program. The targeted areas assisted are shown here, I'm sorry. For the 2019 program year, the city of Sandusky assisted low and moderate income areas of the city in addition to improving the city as a whole. Assistance was made available to citywide persons meeting the CDBG eligibility requirements for low and moderate income benefit. The city of Sandusky identified eight projects that benefited low and moderate income persons citywide. Projects with citywide benefit included fair housing, public facilities and infrastructure activities, blight elimination, and food assistance. The percentage of low to moderate income persons benefit was 77.46%. And then this slide here shows the eligible areas for CDBG. These are the low to moderate income areas by census blocks. And then, as required by the city, or as required, the city of Sandusky published a legal ad advertising the draft report was available, and that a 15-day comment period had begun. This ad was published on December 14th, 2020, and comments were taken until today, December 28th, at 2:00 p.m. And at this time, I'd like to go ahead and review the public comments. There were four comments received via email. There were replies to each with no further responses received. On 12/20/2020, the question was, what dollar amount does the city expect to receive this year? In response, I've not been contacted directly with an anticipated dollar amount. Looking back at prior year's files, it appears that the annual action plan discussions with the CAC committee begin in February or March for the upcoming year. So I assume that that's around the time that I will be getting some information. Jackie on 12/19/2020 submitted a comment, since this is to help improve places with low income, maybe we should improve Churchill Park or enlarge the splash pad. There are only one small thing, it has to be turned on by a person every day. Play equipment is over 20 years old. My response was noted, and that it will be discussed during the 2021 action plan planning. Brian on 12/17/2020, MacArthur Park needs sidewalk and streetlights. The response, again, noted, and will be discussed during the 2021 action plan planning. And then a final comment was from John on December 27th, 2020. Looking at just page two of the draft plan, the numbers, years, percentages don't make any sense. In the following pages, many of the programs ended up with zeros. No money spent, question mark? The plan on the surface looks like a failure. The response was that the reports are pulled from the HUD's reporting system, IDIS. The numbers generated are based on a five-year consolidated plan, which has larger goals over the course of four, five years. Being that 2019 was the year, the first year, not all of the goals had money allocated to them for that particular year. Therefore, the reports from HUD will show zeros for money spent and percentages. The follow-up questions to that were, how can a program be 7,000%? My added response to that question was, the prediction was way low, way lower than the result. We're looking at how these numbers were populated. I am with my representative looking at those numbers, as well as, since this is a draft, it is possible that the final submitted to HUD will be modified. And that concludes the presentation portion of this public hearing. I have added my email address on this slide as a form of contact, and I've also added a link to the website where the full report can be found, along with any other CDBG action plans and consolidated plans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Eversole. Commissioners, I think we've dealt with the public comments or questions, so I will ask for comments or questions from commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yeah. Ms. Eversole, would you go back to the slide just before special needs? I don't remember the name of it.
Yes, sir. Neighborhood stabilization?
Might be. Go ahead, back it up, if you would. Not sure. I think it's forward of that.
Okay, this one here?
Yes. That's the one. I just wanted to point out for planning here in the future that at $392,000, we benefited about 8,000 people, whereas on the next slide, you're going to see for $15,000, OGO benefited 4,895 people. Just suggest that we take a look as we're dispersing this money. I'm sure there are other entities in the community that operate like OGO that perhaps we should be looking at funding those kinds of folks and those kinds of activities. They seem to benefit a large number of people for not a whole lot of money, or even OGO for that matter, I believe, or the mobile food pantry. I'm sorry. The point is, a lot of people can be benefited for a lot less money if we're careful and looking for those opportunities. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? If there are none, I will declare this. If there are none, I will declare that public hearing closed. Commissioners, yeah, before you settle communications for staff recommending various legislation, can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Lot of objection that motion be approved in the hearing, no objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have 10 consent items on the agenda this evening. There are seven ordinances and three liquor permits. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. It should be coming up on your screen now. Beginning with consent agenda item A, we have a 2021 Transportation Service Agreement with Erie County Board of Developmental Disabilities. Item B is a 2021 Transportation Service Agreement with Cedar Point. Item C is a 2021 Transportation Service Agreement with Cancer Services. Item D is a 2021 Transportation Service Agreement with Sandusky City Schools. Item E is the permission to dispose of a vehicle. Item F is a vacation for a portion of Fourth Street, and this is its second reading. Item G is a vacation of an alley located south of 1404 through 1424. And I apologize, I actually can't read Third Street, and that is its second reading. I think that my computer froze. I apologize. Item H is a new liquor permit for Paddle and Climb LLC. Item I is a new liquor permit for Lakes 11 LLC, doing business as Sandusky Wine Merchant. And item J is a transfer of a liquor permit for Dot Red LLC, doing business as Circle K.
Having heard these ordinances, Commissioners, what is your plan?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items and declaring that all ordinances and our resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with section reflected in the ordinances and our resolutions, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the city charter. And that would be consent agenda items A through J.
Second. Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Horstman, there was a question from the public regarding the need to, on the legislation regarding the Sandusky schools. Can you speak to that, why we're doing a deal with them when they have their own bus fleet?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a contract renewal that we've had since 2017, and we've been providing this. It offers a few different things, one of which it's a discounted rate that Sandusky City Schools students can get for our fixed route passes on a quarterly basis. It also does provide dial ride demand response service for individual students typically. It's not very high volume. It's most typically students who are getting rides out to Ee Hovee down in Mylan that they transport the students to. So it's not providing rides to the schools of large quantities as a typical school bus would, but for more individualized transportation needs.
Thank you, Mr. Horstman. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinances and the liquor permit transfers.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those ordinances are passed, the liquor permits are transferred. Now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 1A is an ordinance amending Part 9, Title III, Chapter 933, Section 933.07, Section 933.15, Section 933.17, Section 933.25, Section 933.27, and Section 933.28 of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in the matter and way specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item 1B, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 1B is an ordinance amending Part 9, Title III, Chapter 939, Section 939.01, Section 939.03, Section 939.04, Section 939.05, Section 939.06, 939.17 of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in the matter and way specifically set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number two, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the Capital Improvement Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinzler.
Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution of this ordinance, move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rule, or resolution, I'm sorry, of the, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Reader, I think I know the answer to this, but I would like the audience to hear it all, so that this is simply a formality to, so we can continue to pay our bills into the first couple of weeks of the new year and not stiff any of our vendors. I'm guessing that you're going to agree with that.
Commission President, so this is actually just a requirement from ORC, where anytime we do a transfer of funds from one fund to another, we have to get a resolution from the commission approving that. This item was already budgeted for. This is simply just the resolution allowing me to transfer the funds.
So not new money, just transferring existing funds?
Correct.
Good. Thank you. Additional questions or comments, Commissioner? Ms. Briggs, will you call roll on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number three was walked in tonight's meeting. It also should be shown on your screen. I might have just clicked the wrong one. Here with me. Can everybody see it now?
We're looking at that ordinance yet.
Yes.
Okay, great. Item number three is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Four to Ordinance Number 20-058 passed by this city commission on March 23, 2020, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2020, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, what is this?
Ms. Reader, you can give us a discussion, a description of what's going on with this piece of legislation.
Absolutely. Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole. So, sorry for the last minute, final budget amendment for the year. However, our pay period ended on December 23, last Wednesday, and we are getting paid this week, so we had to get the final pay in for the year to make sure all of our numbers were correct. So that just happened late this afternoon. Mackenzie, if you can scroll possibly to the next page of this, it'll give them the dollar figures that might be helpful. But most of these are a reduction to the budget from where we were previously. The general fund, there is an increase, and that is basically anticipation of not sure if we're going to get reimbursement for the transit grant here in the next three days before we close the year end. So that is kind of a safety net in case we don't get our reimbursement. I had increased the transfer amount for the transit program to $347,000 this year. A lot of these, I'm still seeing the first screen. I don't know if anybody else is. Can you possibly scroll to the second one?
I, yeah, it's, and I apologize, I tried to get this on two screens, and it makes the wording really small. So here's the second screen, and I can scroll back if you need.
While she's doing this, I'll just read what they are. So the general fund, there's an increase to the budget of $398,700. Again, most of that is the safety net for the transit if we do not get reimbursement here in the next three days before the end of the year. The street fund, it's a reduction of $290,000. The transit fund is a reduction of $591,000. Park and Recreation, a reduction of $25,870. The Fire Pension Fund, an increase of $20,000. State Grants, an increase of $20. Federal Grants, a decrease of $900,000. Coronavirus Relief Funds, that's an increase of $14,610.06. That's to account for our final third round of CARES Act funding. The Capital Improvement Fund, a reduction of $54,995. Capital Projects Fund, a reduction of $1,143,200. Special Assessment Fund, an increase of $1,700. Bond Retirement Fund, an increase of $8,341. The Water Fund, a decrease of $130,630. The Sewer Fund, a decrease of $1,8346. The General Trust Fund, an increase of $34,602. The Park Endowment Fund, an increase of $340. And the Cemetery Endowment Fund, an increase of $1,600. So again, these are just the final budget appropriations for this year to make sure we're, have everything appropriated and decreased our appropriations where we could to make the fund balances match where we needed to be at the end of the year.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
If I may, Ms. Reader, this is essentially the same thing we've gone through for every year that I've been on the commission. There's a true up, if you will, at the end of the year. It's one of the quirks of government accounting, maybe required by the ORC. I'm not sure what the origin of the requirement is, but it's not really a budget in the sense that this is what we project our spending is going to be. It's a budget in terms of, this is what we spend. And it just has, we have to go through this process at the end and true all that up. Is that a reasonably fair summary?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Reader, there is little to no chance that we will not be reimbursed by the transit, for our transit dollars. Is that not correct?
It's tough. This year has been a rough year. Some of these people have been hurt with coronavirus. They have lost employees or processing things. I've got notifications that they should be coming. I'm just not sure when we'll actually receive the funds. So with the timing of this and being our last meeting of the year, I needed to plan for worst-case scenario. If I do not get those funds, it's been approved, and these funds only get transferred if they need to be transferred, so.
Got it. Okay. Good enough. Thank you, Ms. Reader. Additional questions or comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just a general comment for staff. The present, I couldn't, we couldn't read that, so we had to say, I had the same problem with the presentation we had, a presentation we had earlier. If you would enlarge these things a little bit before you bring them to us, before you put them on the screen, it would be very helpful, so people could actually read it. I realize it's easier to simply make a copy of what you have, read it on a printed page in front of you, but it's not big enough when you project it on the screens. Additionally, just a question about, so make sure I understand this, since Mr. Murray mentioned it. Essentially, what happened is, is we have money that we spent or intend to spend in certain accounts that may not have it, and you move it from accounts that have money? Is that what is occurring here at the end of the year?
Through you, Commission President.
Go ahead.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole. No, this, just, I can't move it from one fund to the next. I have to make sure that our revenues meet what we said we were going to expend for the year, so that is why a majority of these, I had to reduce the expenditures because the revenue didn't come in where we needed to be, and I can't have a fund be negative at the end of the year.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Briggs, will you call roll on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number four is an ordinance making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2021.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
and I can't have a fund be negative at the end of the year.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Yes, Mr. President, item number four is an ordinance making general appropriations for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President, Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed on first reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Uh, just a point of order, uh, I wanna make sure I understand what we just did. We voted twice on the motion and the ordinance, but I think we passed that, uh, just on first reading. Uh, so I just wanna clarify that with the law director.
Uh, through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Murray, uh, correct, this is actually just a first reading, um, although we just passed both the motion and the ordinance. The ordinance will not take effect until after the second reading. Was that a question?
And, and I, and I believe Commissioner Twine was specific in, in noting that that was the first reading.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, that, that does address my question, I wanna make sure we're on the same page, thank you.
Good. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number five, please?
Yes, Mr. President, item number five is an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for the months of January, February, and March, two thousand and twenty-one, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in accordance, uh, with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President, Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number six, please?
Yes, Mr. President, item number six is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone parcel number fifty-eight dash six eight zero zero nine dot zero zero zero, located at twenty-one zero one West Perkins Avenue from PF Facilities to LM Limited Manufacturing District, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section thirteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section thirteen of the city charter.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President, Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number seven, please?
Yes, Mr. President, item number seven is an ordinance approving the amended bylaws of Neil Ride Regional Council of Governments and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the charter. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, and now on the ordinance.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. And I conclude our regular agenda, we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission President Brady, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start this evening with donations. First, a donation of six hundred and seventy dollars was received from Commissioner Dave Watson for the Recreation Department, I'd ask for a motion to accept that generous donation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved to Commissioner Watson. Thank you to Commissioner Watson.
Thank you, uh, we'd also like to thank the commissioners who opted to give back a portion of their pay to the general fund, as well as to provide an update that Sandusky Rec applied for and received a five thousand dollar grant to assist in improvements for the baseball field at J.C. Park. Planned improvements include replacing planting, or sorry, replacing and painting some areas of fencing around the park, replacing foul ball, netting, painting dugouts and concession area. Partners for the improvements include the Sandusky Travelers Baseball Program, the Sandusky Community Church of the Nazarene, and any other businesses or entities who would like to spruce up the park, would be welcome. Those interested in donating funds or services, the project can contact Jason Whirling, four one nine, six two seven, five eight three three. The improvements coincide with the new connector trail project for the J.C. Park that will debut in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one, and we continue to work towards the implementation of the overall master plan for J.C. Park that will eventually include the total refurbishment of the Scott May Basketball Courts as well. Uh, additionally, for recreation, uh, the Sandusky Rec Department uh, received funds in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred, reselling an annual distribution from the Mylander Foundation in two thousand and twenty. These funds are to be used as directed by the Sandusky City Commission for the purchase of trees and/or plantings to be planted in or structural improvements made at Sandusky City Parks or other recreation areas. In recent years, funds have, but used to help purchase playground equipment for your hair on park and flooring for the rec room at two 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 New Megs or Meg Street. These new funds will be used as permanent for park and recreation purposes in two thousand and twenty-one and beyond. Uh, I'd ask for a motion to accept both those donations, uh, to Sandusky Recreation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved to our thanks to all of those entities.
Okay, uh, moving on to new and old business, uh, for administration. The holiday lighting contest was a success with photos being taken from neighborhoods all over Sandusky. A huge thank you to our partners at the Sandusky Register for sharing the details and celebrating our winners, and thank you to all participants for spreading holiday cheer this year. Uh, winners included for residential seven eighteen Sycamore Line, nineteen fourteen First Street, and ten eleven Alpine Drive. Marshall, the Merry Grouse Museum, Mabon Alpha's, Ethel's Quilt Shop, and Vida. The staff at both the Register and the city also gave the BGSU Building falcons' lofts an honorary award for their artistic uplighting installed earlier this month. Uh, thank you to all on staff and at the Register who helped make that possible, including a suggestion from a community member. Uh, also, New Year's Eve fireworks presented by Hotel Kilborn will take place at nine P.M. Thursday, December thirty-first. Fireworks will be set off at the end of the Jackson Street Pier. The weather delay date will be January first, two thousand and twenty-one at nine P.M. Social distancing is encouraged for everyone in attendance. For those wishing to stay indoors, the fireworks will be streamed live on the city of Sandusky's Facebook page. Uh, moving on to the police department, our community impact officers assisted volunteers with OGO at their Christmas fresh market, which took place in our parking lot on December twenty-first. OGO provides hundreds of people with free hams, food, and groceries. We also assisted OGO with Project Happy Delivery, a gift drive-through in our parking lot on December twenty-third. Both events drew very large crowds, and OGO did and does an outstanding job. We're very thankful for their presence in our community. Uh, for the fire department, on January third, two thousand and twenty-one, Rick McGee will be retiring after twenty-eight years of honorable service to the fire department. Firefighter McGee is a city resident and was well-known in the community, which made the many community members he knew feel more comfortable in dealing with tragic events. We'd like to thank him for his dedicated twenty-eight years of service and wish him a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Uh, moving on to the finance department, a federal reminder for the property owners of vacant dwellings. Your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months. We highly recommend that you contact our office to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which will lead to costly repairs for the property owner. Us, we're counting off its numbers, four one nine, six two seven, five eight nine three. And for public works, on December sixteenth, an unfortunate traffic accident occurred at the intersection of West Perkins Ave and Caldwell Street, causing an outage. Equipment needed for the repair has a six to eight-week lead time, so we don't anticipate it being installed until February or March. Temporary controllers have installed for the time, ensure somewhat consistent traffic patterns throughout the holiday season, and after the holidays, we will work with the county engineer's office to evaluate the need to continue renting this equipment. All costs associated with the repair will be billed to the driver's insurance company, but we are seeking emergency approval for the purchase of equipment in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. I'd ask for a motion to allow us to move forward with those emergency.
So, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just a comment, uh, in terms of the upgrades, are we gonna get upgraded lights at that location as opposed to what they just knocked down?
Uh, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, uh, Commissioner President.
If you know the answer to that, uh, Mr. Webster, go right ahead. If you don't, perhaps Josh Fox, I think that may still be with us, he may have that answer.
I, I, I was gonna refer to Josh Snyder, I assume he's still on the, the call and he can answer. Or I'd be able to with more detail.
Yeah, I, I would say, um, and I don't know this, this intersection in particular, um, but I believe that was done recently in the Perkins Avenue Corridor Signal Project. So I don't know that, if there's much upgrading that, that need be done at this location because, um, memory serves me right, that was done in the last five years.
Okay, thank you.
So, but there wouldn't, wouldn't be much upgrading.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, uh, moving on, the forestry division will be performing Christmas tree collection throughout the city during the week of January eleventh, and will distribute further details throughout our website, the press, and social media. Residents may also drop off trees from January fourth, fourteenth at either the Shelby Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot or the Kiwanis Parking Lot at Kiwanis Park, which is adjacent to our, uh, Big Island Water Works Facility uh, at Cedar Point Drive and First Street. For questions regarding Christmas tree collection, please call four one nine, six two seven, five eight two nine. And then finally, for public works, streets and traffic has completed two rounds through each zone for leaf collection. Residents are still welcome to drop off leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the City Service Center seven days a week until January eleventh. And then finally, some scheduling for the planning department. The Arts and Culture Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the week two, at five fifteen P.M. The Landmark Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January twentieth, at four thirty P.M. The January Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-first, at four thirty P.M. And the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, at five P.M. All meetings will be held virtually and can be viewed on Tiddy's YouTube page. Uh, I'd ask, uh, that concludes my remarks for this evening, I'm happy to answer any questions from the commissioners.
Commissioners, questions for the city manager? No questions, great. Next item on our agenda, items of old business, any items of old business?
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
I got a, received another letter today from, um, eleven oh one West Jefferson Street from, uh, Mr. Charles alone. I'm not gonna read it all, but, uh, again, uh, this continues to be problematic with this, uh, uh, bar there. I know, I'm gonna give the letter to the clerk and she can make copies for commissioners. But, uh, some of the highlights that I thought, uh, he questioned the fifty-feet law. There's never been a day without, uh, this noise rattling in windows and then throughout the neighborhood. And then he, uh, commented, as I drove through the neighborhood Sunday afternoon, "All you get to see in the street and tree lawns was trash, cups, beer bottles, containers that migrated from the party at the bar. It looked like a third-world, uh, country." "I quit picking them up a long time ago," he indicated. And then, uh, later on, he says, "Later, I heard a fight outside, but since there was no gunfire this time, I didn't bother to even check it out. The business is not compatible with the neighborhood, and there's no parking lot that is big enough to handle the large crowds, uh, throughout the neighborhood." I have nothing against bars like this at the same time, but I have nothing against steel mills and slaughterhouses, but I do not wanna live next to them for the same reason. And then, uh, I, I agree that this cannot go on, I know, uh, we're actively working on it, um, to turn the neighborhoods around, as Mr. Meizer said earlier tonight. Um, I don't wanna think of Sandusky as, uh, uh, majority blighted, but, uh, this is stuff for, uh, folks to leave, and, and I want every resident to stay. In fact, I want more to move in, and, uh, hopefully, we can get this turned around, going in the next year. Uh, we've, um, I don't wanna say we hit a snag, but, uh, maybe we can get some momentum back, uh, to create, uh, a different atmosphere. This is just not good in the middle of a, uh, active neighborhood, our community. Thank you. I'll give this letter to the clerk.
Buck, I, I, I feel it necessary to perhaps address this, uh, rather, rather slightly and not, not in depth, but I, I will say this, that, uh, this city does have a dog in this fight. Uh, we, we, uh, it is our obligation to provide a peaceful and quiet neighborhood for residents to live in, and, uh, we are going to get an opportunity to weigh in on this issue, uh, through, uh, liquor permit renewals. And I would ask each commissioner to, uh, pay very close attention to the police reports that, uh, that, uh, are associated with that property, and I would ask them to pay very close attention to the date when that, uh, when that property's liquor license is going to be renewed. It is going to be coming before, uh, before us for, uh, for our input, and I would ask you to, uh, I would ask each of you to evaluate that as it comes before us. So, uh, uh, there is, uh, another chapter to be written in this, and hopefully, that chapter will include returning that, uh, neighborhood, uh, to a neighborhood. Any additional items of old business?
Uh, if, through, Commissioner President, if I could just say one thing to, to that comment. I completely agree and sympathize and empathize with what, uh, the individuals in that neighborhood or any neighborhood that is dealing with a troubled business or a, a, a challenging business go through. Uh, I will say, I've been very impressed in the past with the efforts of the commission and the staff, uh, particularly, as Chief Horzak, and then on this issue. Uh, Chief Oliver have all been doing, I think, a really good job of dealing with problem bars in the past, and I know that we'll do everything that we can as well on this one. Uh, it does take time because the people have property rights and constitutional rights, but we are aggressively pursuing this as we have in the past, and our hope is that we'll be able to resolve it quickly uh, and bring some peace back to that neighborhood and, and the community at large.
Additional items of old business, commissioners? Items of new business, any items of new business, commissioners?
I have one, I need to set a public hearing for February the eighth of next year to amend the zoning map for numerous parcels located south of First Street, north of Second Street, all being east of Farwell and west of Cedar Point Drive. If that public hearing can be set for February the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, I will appreciate it.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, uh, discussion, not objection, that motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any additional items of new business?
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
This has been a very difficult year, um, I know at the end of two thousand and nineteen, going into two thousand and twenty, um, we had great expectations and looking forward to a number of, of things taking place. Um, but as we well know, um, things kind of, uh, flow down, and at certain points have stopped um, due to circumstances beyond our control. Um, I do wanna thank, um, Eric and the team for the work that they put into, um, trying to help maintain things and keep things going. And I know it hasn't always been easy, um, there have been some difficult decisions that had to be made, um, and everyone. to be made, and everyone wasn't always in agreement, but I do appreciate the point that where we're at right now, looking forward to the closing out of this year going into a new year. And things won't be that easy next year either, we will still be dealing with challenges and things that will seemingly stop us or slow us down, but I just want to again, thank everyone, all the commissioners, the city staff, and Eric for the work that we've all done this year. Looking forward to rebuilding some things coming in the new year, listening to some of the concerns, quality of life concerns that are affecting people in our average neighborhoods, as one of the commissioners mentioned tonight. I look forward to us addressing those issues and determining how best we can continue to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens moving forward. And again, I just want to thank and appreciate everyone who's worked hard, made some difficult decisions, come in there, and just looking forward to the fact that we can all work together going into the new year, starting some things from the beginning, starting some things in the middle part, and then ending up on some things and continuing to build our community. Thank you.
Commissioners, additional items of new business? If there are none, Ms. Briggs, were there any communications from residents regarding city business to be read?
Yes, Mr. President, we had two people that wrote in for the public comment. The first comes from Diane Peters at 1105 West Jefferson Street in Sandusky. She wrote, "I'm writing in regards to Amira's Turn Bar, and I'm asking for an update on the intentions that the city has for this establishment. I've been in contact with Agent Croft from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Investigative Unit in the Cleveland District. In my latest email a week ago, Agent Croft states that the investigations that so far have been completed, which resulted in two administrative citations with significant violations, it will be up to the city to reject a renewal of their permit or the Ohio Liquor Control Commission to revoke their license. May I ask the intent for this establishment? I had previously written a very lengthy letter, which was emailed to each commissioner and city manager, Whoopsir, outlining the safety concerns and what the quality of life has become living with this bar in our close-knit neighborhood, with only one commissioner taking the time to respond. We have lived in our home for 32 years, are good citizens and pay our taxes on time. After living in our home for over half of my lifetime where we have raised our family, it saddens me to think that we are going to give in and let these people win this fight. I do not want to have to feel forced to move out of the city of Sandusky because we are giving establishments and people with very little integrity the upper hand on how life is living in Sandusky. I feel the days of bars in densely populated neighborhoods unfortunately needs to be a thing of the past and a discussion that needs to be had. We are not seeing the Old Everett's Club from back in the day where people are going for a friendly fish fry, beer, and conversation. We are witnessing dangerous situations, shootings, trash in our yards, shootings that are happening right next to our homes that have small children in them. Our children should be able to live in this city that has great opportunities and safe neighborhoods. Parents and grandparents should have to live with fear when they want to let their little ones roller skate, play with sidewalk chalk, or ride bikes because things are starting to heat up at the end of the block. Thank you for your time, and please consider all of this as if you were living next to this establishment." The second comes from Tim Schwanger at 362 Sheffield Way in Sandusky. He said, "Happy New Year, city commissioners and staff. With the announced retirement of Sandusky firefighter Rick McGee and retirement of police officer Lieutenant Dan, or Lieutenant Rich Braun, is there dedicated intent to fill both positions after the first of the year?"
Thank you, Ms. Briggs, I think that our city manager perhaps has the answer for Mr. Schwanger in his, for his question.
Yes, through the Commission President, the answer to that question is absolutely, we'll fill both of those positions. And I know that in the case of fire, they've already begun the process to interview and fill positions from the list, and that process is also ongoing in the Police Department. And so we'll fill vacancies just as quickly as we can and as they come up throughout the course of 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Webster, and I feel compelled to respond again to Ms. Peters on her communication. Let me assure you, Ms. Peters, that this staff and this commission is not giving up and they're not giving in on that issue, the issue that you're speaking about. So that next chapter will be written, not soon enough for any of us, but you have our attention, and we are going to get back into that neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
As regard to Ms. Peters' letter, I would like to just comment about constitutional rights. With regard to shootings and noise complaints all hours of the night, I don't think there's any constitutional rights to do that. So the concept of we don't have anything or any way to address the problems is something that I think we need to look at really carefully. This has gone on long enough, we have, the kinds of things that deal with people's quality of life in these neighborhoods is most important and should be a number one priority for us this year. This one's pretty serious with the shootings, a stray bullet can do just about, it can end up anywhere. In addition to that, we've received letters recently from citizens regarding cats overrunning the neighborhoods, and the last one we received, I actually think has actually grown from a problem on the north side of the tracks on, near Bolt Street and moved over to 42nd Street due to our inability or whatever to control it. So I think the, we need to put special emphasis on this budget and what we're doing this year to deal with these inner, these inner-city issues that truly negatively impact people's lives. Thank you.
If I may?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just so you know, Mr. Commissioners and Commission President, the Police Department is doing everything they possibly can do to rectify any situations there at the former Dog House that's now called Amira's Turn. We haven't had any shootings there since previous to my time. The one that was there, we conducted an investigation, we have a warrant out for that individual. Most recently, we were called there on the 18th, there were four different complaints, two of them were unfounded, one of them led to an OVI arrest, and one of them led to two people leaving the area. We've been in touch with liquor control previous to my time and since I've been here, they're not really too receptive with a lot of issues, they're kind of focused on COVID and COVID-related violations, and understandably so. I would definitely be opposed to any kind of permit renewal, obviously that's up to the board, but we will continue to do whatever we can do. I will go meet with this lady who sent this letter, I know Mr. Lone, I've talked to Mr. Lone too, I'll continue communicating with him, and we'll try to do everything we can do to bring some peace of mind to the residents in the area. We have a very visible presence when this bar is open, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, Chief Oliver. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved and happy new year.